Good evening. Welcome to Marquette Charter Township's regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, January 22nd of 2020. It is 7:00 PM. Roll call. We have, down to my far right...
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment Trail.
Mike Springer, Eagles List Road.
Dave Wiegand, Burton Road.
Ryan Deiderson, Marquette Township.
Okay, with that, the next thing up is the approval of the agenda. I just have one thing I want to add. I guess I'll just put it under Reports. We just got confirmation about the, what they're calling the MOC. MOC A2, which is Marquette, Elger, Climate and Health Adaptation Second Phase. I don't know. So, under 90. With that change, do we have somebody motion to approve the agenda?
Approved as of the curve.
Wiegand?
Yeah, as amended.
Second?
Second.
Steve Hakinen? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from the previous meeting of January 8th, there were some corrections?
I see a bunch of corrections.
I had four.
Yeah.
And they're really not in this particular one that you have in your packet?
No.
Because... Steve Hakinen's going to be both the Vice Chair and the Secretary.
I got that.
How did you get out of that, Mr. Wiegand? So, it actually should say, "Motion to nominate Dave Wiegand as Secretary for the Planning Commission for 2020." That's one correction.
And did Steve support his motion to nominate him for Vice Chair?
No.
No?
No, he supported the two...
For you to be the Secretary.
Yeah.
No, Vice Chair was you and I supporting him.
Correct.
The only thing that was wrong in the third motion was his name was as Secretary.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the wrong one.
It shouldn't be. Okay. On page two, "The Motion to Approve." Approve just needs a V in it. Something else too. A couple other little things. There were things. Otherwise...
You already sent them to Jason, did you?
I did. I sent them to you and Jason. And he said he was going to have them updated. I think he might have...
I got them via email.
Did you get that updated?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So anyways, so we're approving the one we got via email. If somebody wants to make that motion?
Move to approve as amended.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Wiegand, Hakinen? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Should I read them the three-minute rules?
No. I don't have to.
No public. Unfinished business. We have the 2020-24 Draft of the Marquette Township Master Plan Update. Discussion. I just know that I've been through this many times. To be honest with you, it's, and as I wrote to Jason on my last edits, this is a very well-done document.
As well as it's done, I'm getting tired of reading it, so I have no comments.
Anybody else have? You know, there were some, I guess the only questions I would have of Jason is about the appendices, whether all those are going to be in there? And if we want to... Nope, looks like we already added that. That's about it. And he's got some examples of what the resolutions would be using from 2013. He's got those in the back. Other Commissioners? Comments?
What was your question about appendices?
I'm sorry?
What was your question about the appendices?
Well, I was just looking at the appendices. They're, of course, not in here, but this is planned to be in here.
Oh, that was your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm happy to see all those in there.
Yeah, I don't have too much else to say about it besides any changes, updates, comments from the Board, plan to move forward. Maybe I relay that back to Jason and go from there.
And where do we go from here? We... It's done?
It's not done.
We have to send it out, right?
Send it out, so...
No, I mean the actual, the text part and stuff.
As far as I'm aware, the draft is...
So now it goes over a 30-day comment period, then?
I believe it's 60-day, 62-day.
62. Do we have to have a public hearing before it was out or after it was out?
After it comes back from the 62-day period, I believe, the public hearing needs to be set.
Then we have a public hearing and then we can undo whatever we want with it after that, right?
Approved by the Commission or does it go to the Board as well?
It's my understanding it's approved by the Commission, then it goes to the Board as information only.
Okay, right. All that is my understanding of the process, so...
So, it's a discussion, but it seems like we need a motion to move this forward. Any motion makers?
I would make a motion to move this to the next process, whether that be the review period?
Moving forward, I'll second that.
I guess, I guess what we should actually do is, the motion should be to accept the draft as presented and move it forward to the next step.
Okay, to accept the draft as presented.
Yeah.
And move it forward. Next step. Any other comments? Now, I'll call the question.
Need to support.
Well, I supported.
Okay, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Draft marijuana zoning text amendment discussion. We still haven't found out why the state spells marijuana differently. So, it's my understanding that tonight we are to look at the 10 different areas and to use our nomographs to help determine where these different businesses are part of this marijuana, where they should be located. I didn't articulate that very well.
Yeah, I think, I think it was left off the last meeting that now that these definitions are formally defined within the ordinance, it's time to incorporate them into how to actually make them usable. I think the first step, staff has set out is to look at Article 15 and how to incorporate that into the, you know, the use districts and the nomograph itself, where these definitions might fit.
Okay. So, we need to go to 15? I think that's mine, isn't it, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. And Dave, you've got it digitally?
Yeah.
So, Article 15.
You know, and that's going to be just some type of discussion, providing us with feedback as far as where we go from here?
And I believe in the notes here, Mr. McCarthy has provided us with some suggestions as to where those may be considered or to be placed. Yeah, item 7B in the staff report. So, he's, let's just, if you have your staff report, why don't we go through these as they're listed? This is for medical marijuana. A grower, and he's suggesting agriculture area, which certainly makes sense to me.
That actually doesn't make any sense. Wouldn't most of that stuff be grown indoors under conditions versus outside? I mean, there's no, I mean, I mean, the growing season is not conducive to that, so I would say that, you know, it would probably be some sort of a structure that it would be grown in, I would guess.
I would think that would end up in a light industrial.
Something, yeah. Or, you know, I think that depending on the size, I mean, even a good-sized commercial building could be used for that, but it depends on, you know, schools.
So, we, we may want more than one, but I do have to agree with agriculture because you have barns and you have other, you know, buildings involved with some agriculture.
Yeah.
So, that certainly would, in my mind, would be an area, but there may be additional areas.
But as far as which, which, which zoning districts permit agriculture under a special use? That's what we're thinking about, right? So, it would have to be agricultural use under a specific district. Do you have those districts?
We don't have any agriculture district.
No, no. A permitted use in a district. That's what we're looking at here, right?
I would make it a special permit on all of these things.
Okay, but I mean, are we going to have to change what's permitted in a district for this? I mean, how many districts allow for agriculture?
You can see across the...
Yeah, there's, I just have to take a look at the whole Article 15. I don't hold that off the top of my head.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. I actually didn't bring it with me, so that was my bad, but...
Yeah, so if you, and you can look at this too, Steve, just so we can be on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if I can interject.
Yeah.
You've got to put, you've got to enter into this nomograph, the marijuana, whether it's commercial or the type of operation. How many different operations are there?
10.
10? So, I'm thinking that you have to have all 10 types of operations listed and not necessarily under agriculture, but you have to have all 10 types of operations listed. And then you go across and indicate what zoning districts they can be located in.
Okay, correct, yeah.
And each one of those, wherever you pick, if you, if you pick segregated business, it would have an SP, which means a special use permit.
Okay.
Just for one of these eight districts of the...
Right. And let's just go at it one at a time, right? So, let's focus on the grower. So, we want to pencil in something here on under agriculture?
And note that this is, this is the medical marijuana section, which...
Right.
Give or take.
So, just break MM?
By definition, is there any difference between medical and commercial when it comes to growing?
Okay, so we're going to have to do this for recreational as well? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's a, there are five listed medical marijuana definitions.
Five.
And there were 10 licensed recreational marijuana definitions.
There's 10 of those.
So, if you look at the grower definition for medical, under medical marijuana, compare that to the marijuana grower definition for recreational marijuana, there's not a huge difference.
No. That's, that's the point I was trying to get to. It's pretty much the same. But I, do, would we have to distinguish them in the nomograph as different? Or would you have to just give a general classification?
That is something that I don't know and I would have to check on.
Well, if you look at what the growers, whether they're medical or recreational, it's basically the same plant limit.
Essentially the same activity, how the state looks at it.
Okay.
Could be different. Is different.
But it doesn't look like it in our definitions here.
Well, I...
Odorized cures practice.
I think you're reading too much into it.
Okay.
I, I think when you get to up at the top, number one for medical marijuana, you've got a grower. And the definition for a grower, I think what you need to do is put, that medical marijuana grower needs to be in that nomograph and then under whatever category is appropriate. And I'm not sure that agriculture is appropriate. I mean, it may be.
Okay.
But then you, then you need to move across those eight categories and put an SP wherever you think it should be allowed.
In which district?
Yeah.
Zoning district.
And you got to do the same thing all the way down the line. You got to do the same thing with processor and secure transporter. So, you could put wherever those 10 different operations. So, we're going to have, I mean, we're going to seriously expand that nomograph.
Right.
Because it's going to be 10 things noted in there and then we have to say where they, where they can be located.
But because there's only five things for medical marijuana and there are 10 things for recreational marijuana, we should identify the two, MM, RM. You know, there may be places where they differ, although I don't see why it would, but you have five more different classifications of, that we have to find a place for.
We're not called the same thing either. If you're number two in recreation and number two in medical, it's the same thing, but we're called different things, processor and marijuana grower.
That's why I think you have to list, each one of them's got to be listed separate.
Okay, do we, all right.
So, you do have to do them both separately then, right?
Yeah, I would think if you're listing them, you would list them as, under recreational marijuana, you would list it as marijuana grower, the same way the definition reads.
Okay.
So, that might be, might be a point of clarification that we can go through. Even if we break these down into medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana, put them in nomograph, and it's very possible they're going to be the same district under special use.
Okay.
But just broken down into medical versus recreational.
Okay.
That's my understanding of it.
And he's made some notes on the, on the paper in here when, right below background there, he's got the grower under medical marijuana, he's got a grower, and he's suggesting it goes in the agriculture.
Right.
And the one right below that is processor and agriculture, agricultural support in light industry.
Yeah, he already has suggestions for us under each one of these, so I guess we just go through these and see if it fits or should be expanded?
And I don't, I don't really, I don't know where the big discussion's going to come from tonight. We already, and this is something we went over a month ago or so.
Well, yeah, but we...
But what, the way the discussion went was that this is where we decided they would go, and we also came to a consensus that it should, whatever, whatever zoning district they went in should be, it's going to be a special use permit for all of it.
Right.
So, now I think the only thing you got to figure out is what zoning district you want each one of these things to be in.
I agree.
Right?
So, start with the first one and, no?
Yeah.
Okay. See, I don't think we, the red text there is what Jason is suggesting.
Right.
That wasn't us.
That was based on our discussion.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's just kind of his recommendation to then cross-reference with the Article 15 nomograph. And I don't, I don't know if he's really anticipating any hard-line decisions being made tonight, but just to continue the ball rolling, I know it's been rolling for a little bit here.
Well, we get the, we get the time tonight. We don't have anything else pressing, do we?
Can we narrow it down to, is there someplace in general that you don't want any marijuana-type operations to be conducted?
Well, it's hard based on our zoning because I noticed that the city has spots around schools and churches that they're not allowing that within so many feet.
Yeah, we can make that distinction aside from that.
Okay, and that can be part of the special use requirements.
Right, that's in 16, the section 16, it's got the, the exceptions, and that's where you put the exception for where it can be located. It can't be located within 1,000 feet of the school or whatever you want to say.
Okay.
And that would apply to all the special use permits for that type of operation for where it can be.
Makes sense.
Permitting use, detailed use regulations.
Yeah, yeah. Detailed use of regulations.
The city's with schools and churches.
Yeah.
And councilman centers and all that stuff, so...
Rehabilitation.
Substance abuse.
Yeah, so then it wouldn't matter if we put it in a agricultural zoning district or a agricultural zoning district in here?
No, there's, yeah, only eight zoning districts. You have forest recreation, scenic residential, rural residential, urban residential, the developmental district, general business, segregated business, and resource production.
Would we be able to get a map like the city had where you have all of those spots on there and then the 500 feet or 1,000 feet, you know, circle around there where you couldn't have it?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you guys have a list of want to follow suit similar to that type of, I presume, a map could be created.
As far as I can see, yeah. Just to show... Well, it'd kind of be a matter of taking our current map and adding something to it, right?
Yeah, yep. It's not an issue.
Zoning districts right in here.
Are there restrictions on bloggers as far as closeness to schools and churches?
Well, the rule is that the state law applies. You can make yours more restrictive, but you can't make them less restrictive.
Did I say that right? What was your question, Steve?
You're right.
Does the state have anything in their, in their law regarding closeness to schools or churches?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, no. And I think that's why maybe the city could have decided what that was for them.
Well, and I believe they do, but, but you can make it more restrictive, but you can't make it less restrictive. So, if the state ordinance says 300 feet, you can't make it 200.
Right.
But if you want to make it 1,000, you can certainly make it 1,000.
Okay.
And I think the city guidelines, as long as they're not too out of landish or out of proportion, if you kept them all the same, it would be the thing to do so that they're the same. We only have one school, so...
Just one suggestion on this, on our master plan. I'm not quickly finding the zoning. We've got the future land use map. And we've got a current land use map, but we don't have any...
I don't think it's going to be in it.
Yeah, I'm sure that'll be...
No, that would be a good thing, I think, to add. Got everything else.
No, the only thing that's in the master plan is the future zoning map.
Correct. Or actually, yeah, the future land use map.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, will base our zoning on. So, yeah, having the zoning map would be helpful as we... Maybe it's even in here.
I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what our intentions are tonight. Our, our intention is just to pick out the zoning districts where the different types of operations can take place. And if that's all we're looking for, then we should be on section 15.
Okay.
Article 15, I'm sorry, right?
We're ready.
Because that's, you could take each one of those, and you don't have to look at the, you could just take a look at each one of these and decide what zoning district you want them in.
Okay.
Even if you want to point, you know, staff in the direction to place these and further filter them through what we have, that's an option too. It's...
That makes it easier on us.
I mean, this, the, what we're talking about is putting it under agriculture, that's the use category. I mean, it goes where it goes, right? But what we need to concern ourselves, what I would think, is just indicate our preference for what zoning districts we could put each one of those in.
Okay.
And, I mean, some of that's going to be agriculture because it's, it's growing. It's not in agriculture district, it's in the agriculture use.
True.
Some of it is going to be light industrial because it's processing. So, that's where it's going to end up in the use column, but it's still going to have the same eight zoning districts attached to it. And we just need to, and so I don't, I would think we'd just go through the, where is
Article 15.
And through the, through the, what's in the packet.
And just scribble on there.
Yeah, and just note where you want them.
Even, yeah, break it down, whether it's, tonight, break these under, where to put them under use and save what to do with the zoning districts.
So, like, where do you want growers to end up? What zoning districts are most appropriate for a growing operation?
Agriculture.
You don't have any agricultural zoning districts.
Correct, but it's got to go under some kind of use, right?
Yeah, but we're not trying to figure out what use.
Oh, we're not going to do the use. We're just doing a zoning district.
Okay, if it's a growing operation, it goes under agriculture, right?
But if it's a special use permit, couldn't we just put them underneath all districts and then it's a case-by-case basis? Because if some micro grower wants to grow some plants in his house, you know, and he's growing 80 plants in his house, I mean, is there, we don't want it in any residential districts?
That's what we need to say.
Okay, so I'm just saying, you know, what, what do we want to not have?
Where do you not want to see a growing operation?
I think the thing you have to remember about the growing operation is the smell that you get from it. And then we had a discussion at the DDA about that and it's really bad.
Under our detailed use things, we can put requirements for odor control. That's something we can put in there. And I've read an article where it was actually recommended that there be some consideration given to that. There's some things that you can't control. I can grow, what, five plants in my house?
10 or 12.
Yeah, but nobody can, I mean, I can just do that. I don't need a permit to do that.
Absolutely correct. Now, there are some stipulations that you have to have them concealed. But, and where is, where is that language?
But it's not zone. That's a state, state regulation.
That's strictly law.
Yeah.
Okay, there's, there's no regulation.
So, there's no zoning. And if I'm sitting in my house in Trowbridge and I want to grow five plants in my basement, I can grow five plants in my basement. I don't have to seek a zoning permission to do that.
Correct.
But if I want to grow more than is allowed by the state statute, is it 12?
I believe 10 or 12 is in the van.
Okay. I guess I wouldn't plan on going into operation yet, so I'd have to look that up. But if you're going to exceed that, then it falls under a commercial operation.
Yeah.
And then you fall under the zoning restriction.
Well, see, what there, there was a story about Antanagin where there were, people were growing, apparently a lot of people were growing marijuana in Antanagin, and you could smell your neighbor's marijuana growing. So, how, how is that controlled if it's not regulated? I mean, and where do you come up with that?
We would have to get into finding out if the growing operation period is, if you can put regulations in there for odor control and that type of stuff in a growing operation in a house. He's growing five plants. Can you have a odor restriction that he has to follow or can't you? I don't know.
And can you make it more restrictive than we do farmers that spread manure? Bicycle's across Iowa. I mean, only because of where it's located. Smelly. Especially pig farmers.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's not as easy as it looks on the surface.
No.
But I think we're of a tendency to make it too difficult. If you just concentrate on taking these definitions and deciding where do you want these definitions to be conducted and leave out, obviously you have to, if you want to do an ordinance for the recreational grower for his personal use and then you've got medical marijuana... the recreational grower for his personal use, and then you've got medical marijuana, what do they call them, providers or?
That can grow. Provision centers or?
No, it's, it's the ones that can grow for medical marijuana.
Oh, caretakers, yes.
Uh, they can grow, and you can't restrict where those are, those can go on in the house. And they could grow up to twelve plants per, yeah, up to twelve plants per person.
Per person.
Per client, and they have to have a medical marijuana card holder that they're growing them for. Those are something you can't control. But if you wanna put something, and I, I don't know if it'd be a separate ordinance or not, about those types of growing operations, if you can control how they're grown, if they have to be an odor control system in place and all that stuff, that's a whole separate issue besides the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but, you know, like you said, they don't have to apply for anything, so it'd really be somebody saying, hey, I think one of my neighbors is growing marijuana. I don't know which one it is, and so do we have somebody from the township knocking on the door saying, you grow marijuana in there?
That's it, I mean, how?
How do you control it?
How do they enforce something like that?
I don't think you can.
You can pull that book all day long, but.
Once you get up to, you know, these small growers or the micro growers, then, then they're, at least they're licensed.
Yeah, and, and as soon as you're, they're required to have a license, you can require the type of operation that can happen. Some of the safeguards would have to be there.
So if, if I can chime in, I think if you look at the nomograph, in article fifteen right here, you've got three columns, you've got use, non-use intensity, and you've got zoning districts. So these definitions, I think what we'd like to see is these definitions, maybe take these columns one step at a time, see these definitions be categorized under use. Which use are these, these definitions and, and these yeah, just that, gonna be categorized under? After that is set, we can go ahead, you can go ahead and, and decide where and what zoning districts are these gonna be permitted.
And, and that's what he's, he's got in here, is he's got the uses defined as to where they should appear.
Right.
And it looks like in some of these, they're gonna appear in more than one spot. The processor wants to appear under agriculture, agricultural support, and light industry.
Let me pass this down, I don't know if you guys have got a copy of this, it's example, so there's three terms in there, those are three definition terms. According to the recommended definition, what you've got in there, I think it's medical marijuana grower, recreational grower, one more in there, so it's an example of what, what it'd look like in the nomograph.
A medical marijuana grower.
Yeah, if those recommendations were to be followed and put into the nomograph. You'll notice that the zoning district columns are blank, 'cause those haven't been decided upon yet, so eventually, that's what it's gonna look like across article fifteen.
So as I understand, you're suggesting that we go through the, the use, maybe just even transfer these that Jason has picked up from us and put them in those places, have a discussion about that, and the next time then?
Yeah, they do appropriate.
Okay.
They have this inappropriate, next fee suggestion, but it was like industry maybe for the grower too. Might be a possibility.
They all come out five on the land use intensity?
That, I don't know either, that's a thought I had as well, so I'd have to talk with Jason on that and get back to.
I'm just wondering how we determine five.
All right, there might be some criteria that it meets in the zoning ordinance itself, as far as how land use intensity is calculated, I think there is.
How about if for tonight, we just come to a consensus on what use categories they, they go in? Uh, the land use intensity seems to be smoke and mirrors, let Jason figure that out, based on whatever criteria he's using, he's come up with five, I just I don't know if there's any reasoning behind that or not, so I'm not gonna sit around and second guess him. And when we get that done at the next meeting, we can come in with those sheets that you're passing around there, and we can just go along and decide what zoning district we want them in. It'd be easier to make sense, I wouldn't.
Sounds good to me.
You got a piece of paper in your hand.
I've got a pen in my hand.
There you go.
Lots of paper. So, we're gonna start with grower?
You're gonna just start on this sheet that we got?
Screw it on a list.
I don't know if you guys have gotten all the, all the uses from the nomograph list, there's quite a few, the whole article fifteen has got a number of uses in there.
There's sixteen pages in the nomograph.
Yes.
And then what Jason does, he, he's gone through it and just Right. Figured out which uses would be appropriate for which category. And apparently that's on our. Abuse ability. And then we're gonna concur with that, or add additional stuff, or say no. Exactly. Okay.
I guess, if, I just think it would be easier if he put this with the, the different types of operations into the categories, or into the use categories that he's recommended, with the land use intensity that he's recommended. And at the next meeting in the packet, we can have those sheets filled out.
Filled out.
And then we can set here and decide, we can just go through the sixteen sheets if they're all on all the pages, and just figure out what zoning district you want them in.
That's fine.
And, and that would give us a good opportunity to look at the grower, he's got them in agriculture alone. It'd be a good opportunity to leaf through that and see if you want it anyplace else besides agriculture.
Well, we can also, tonight, look at each ones that are being recommended or based on our suggestions, see if there's some other area that we want those, so that when he goes through and fills this out,
Yep.
he can include those. So why don't we just start with medical marijuana grower, and is agriculture enough, or do we want that in segregated business as well? Agriculture, I'm sorry, that's, yeah. It's a zoning district. Going under agricultural support.
Grower by definition, could go under agriculture.
Okay. Am I okay with that? Sure, I mean, that, it, it makes a difference, 'cause it's gonna be, on a case by case basis, in the approved districts that have special use permits.
Yeah, it doesn't really limit anything, it's just a matter of where you're looking up at.
That's right. But we're gonna ask Jason to put these in a nomograph for us for next time.
Right.
Okay, number two, processor, medical marijuana, agriculture, agricultural support, light industry. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Secure transporter, state license required, I don't see where he's recommended anything, he's got commercials for.
See, I would think if, you know, there has to be a facility for the secure transporter that would be in a commercial or light industry.
Okay, let's write that down.
But.
Make that note.
Is, is there a use category that says state license required?
No.
No, and I think maybe that's what he's getting at, is that, and maybe the secure transporter, if they travel just from a licensed establishment to another licensed establishment, do they have their own licensed establishments?
If they, that's, I mean, if they had a location where they had their transport operations originating from it was in the township.
Right, okay.
Where do you want that?
So a guy can't just have a locked, locked van parked out in front of the street that he
I would hope not.
picks up in the morning and, okay. So, commercial, under number three. Is there any other areas? So, wait, 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 so we're, we're gonna require, if somebody wants to be a secure transporter, they're gonna have to apply for a special use permit, is that correct?
Yes.
If they're gonna have a secure transporter operation established in the township, if they're driving through, no.
Okay.
If they're delivering here, no, but if they park their trucks there.
If they, if they decide that they wanna have their garage in market township.
Say to me?
Do they, do, is, are they allowed to store marijuana, or they can only transport it? I mean, can they keep it overnight in the garage?
Don't know.
Yeah, so, okay. Okay.
Maybe that's why that just says state license required, I don't know what's required in that part of the operation.
Yeah, maybe it's spelled out. That stores marijuana, no, it says that stores marijuana and transports.
Marijuana between marijuana facilities.
Right, but it says that stores marijuana, so, in that instance, yeah, there may be something more. Yeah, than just a steel, yeah.
See, I would think that that would come under the same, the same as light industry and commercial.
I mean, if you have to have a, a secure facility to store, that would, yeah.
You know, when it, when it comes to this, why, any of this actually was also brought up in our discussion at the DDA is, all this is strictly cash business. You can't use charge cards or checks or anything. So a lot of these places are going to need some kind of security or bars on windows so people can't get in. And that was one of the items we're looking at as far as where you're gonna put these, you know, on the, of the appearance of it, if it's gonna be in a commercial establishment, it's not gonna look too good with all these bars on the windows, and if it's just a big steel building, or somebody built a new one.
But, but, but the check and credit card thing, that's based on, on federal regulations at this point, is that correct? Banks won't do business with them because of federally, federally regulated.
Yeah.
And because federal government does not, still sees that as a class one narcotic or whatever, whatever that is.
Right.
So I guess once banking rules are changed, I would guess, then, you know, you, they will be able to accept credit cards, 'cause, you know, anybody and their brother can get one of those things on a phone, phone and accept a credit card. But it's, it's the banking regulations that permit them, or don't allow them to take proceeds from sales of legal products that are federally regulated facility, because a bank, I guess.
Well, from what I understood when we were having the discussion, is the, there was a federal law that the banks couldn't do it.
Right.
The bank, okay.
Right, 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 it's because they're federally regulated, right, yeah, banks can't, the federal government won't allow them to do it.
Comes on a money laundering law, some.
Yeah.
We'll get to it, shit.
Yeah, so that might be something to look at, what, whether they should actually go into districts for that secure transporter, since they do store it, I would guess.
So, number three, did we get out of lumber she, the secure transporter, are we gonna put that in a?
Commercial and light industry.
Light industry and commercial.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down. Number four. This is still medic, medical marijuana provisioning center. Where do they purchase this marijuana from a grower, or a processor? That sells supplies and provides marijuana to registered qualifying patients.
We're still talking medical marijuana, I can write. Do you want that just in commercial, or you want it in general business? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, never mind. Getting my uses crossed up with my.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, never mind. Forget it.
I understand why it's confused. Well, it is, and it, it's, it's tough because it's new for everybody else to build it.
Do we have anything under medical, do we have a medical title, I don't see it, 'cause we're in the Rs here, or what? I'm just wondering if there was a use with a old title that said anything about.
Well, under medical?
Yeah, I don't see it. Special residential and institutional? What do you think about that?
We're still talking about provisioning?
Yeah.
I would think for now, you just leave it in commercial.
You just wanna leave it in commercial?
Yeah, I mean, under the use category, commercial, that is a commercial operation, right?
I've got quite a bit under commercial. But it goes mostly to commercial and entertainment, is this considered entertainment, I wouldn't think? Is it a commercial office?
Is it retail?
Yeah.
Yeah, the provisioning center would be retail.
And that, that is under commercial.
Retail store, yeah. Just where was it, oh, back there, I didn't see that. Oh, retail stores, okay, yeah, okay. All right. So, I guess it's under commercial and entertainment, we just got it as commercial.
Can't have it under entertainment, can you?
Well, it's, that's a top heading for commercial, and retail stores are underneath that, so. Unless you want it under an office, there's a medical panel, there we go, commercial office, if it's medical, they could put it under a commercial office. I'm just gonna make.
That's commercial and entertainment, not commercial entertainment.
Okay, but what about commercial office? How about that?
I think that would be good.
Yeah. So let's write commercial office under four, and move on to five, unless somebody has something else.
Under four?
Under four, commercial office. Goes in with the medical.
Okay, all right.
Dental, medical labs.
Gotcha.
Okay. How about number five? Safety compliance facility, a safety compliance facility means a license that is commercial, is a commercial entity that receives marijuana from a marijuana facility, registered primary caregiver, they test for contaminants for tetrahydrocannabinol and other cannabinoids, returns the test results, and may return the marijuana to the marijuana facility. It's a testing lab.
It's got it under commercial, agricultural, support, and light industry, I would think that'd be appropriate.
Okay. If there's any labs in there, maybe it'll fit with those. Okay, let's move on to licensed recreation marijuana establish. Marijuana grower. It's the same as medical grower. We've got, and we chose agriculture for the medical, might as well leave it there for the recreational. Sound good?
Yeah, the one right underneath, the excess marijuana grower, could stay in the same spot, right?
Okay, yep. A little marijuana processor, we have agriculture, agricultural support, and light industry.
That's the same uses we had in the medical, so.
Okay, let's keep that then, let's go on to number four. A secure transporter.
Yeah, I did, that's the same thing we did on the, on the medical, I'm not sure what he's suggesting, your state license required.
Well, it, it may spell it out, and he may know more, and he obviously knows more about it than I do, but.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably the spot for clarification at the next meeting. And something that Jason can certainly expand upon.
That's good.
I would think if you're, but you're looking for someplace in the nomograph to list it.
Right.
So why don't we? But there's no place in there, the nomograph, that state license required?
Right, I understand that, but how, if you do the same that we did under medical for secure transporter, we said commercial and light industry.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Do you think he means that with the transporter, since it's a state required license, that we don't anything to do with that, the state would inspect it?
It's quite possible, yeah.
And I think we, we wouldn't, if he's just transporting, and it's not based here, but I think if he based here, then we would have something something to say as to where he can, his, his operations could be.
Okay, marijuana retailer, this is for recreation. Authorized to purchase and transfer marijuana only from a marijuana grower or a marijuana processor, and sale or transport, transfer to only an individual twenty-one years or older. So it's retailer. And what do we have first?
Like, that'd be the same as the other one, come under commercial.
I would agree.
What's the difference between sale and transfer? What's the difference between sale and transfer? It's a sale or transfer, or a transfer, we
Give it away?
Just giving it, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a legal, giving somebody a gift, maybe because they're a transfer. It's my best guess.
These definitions came right out of the state book, right?
Yeah. So, you know, it should be very similar to what we put for provisioning center, correct?
Yep.
Isn't it similar?
Sure.
So we said commercial office.
I don't know why office.
Yeah, I don't know why we'd do an office there.
The office.
Oh, okay, this is recreational. This is different than medical. Okay, just commercial?
I don't know why we're saying office is medical either, but.
Well, it's, it's an option.
It's more of a medical thing than a recreational thing.
Correct.
That's how I look at it, too.
Right. Well, the other one that we talked about is a medical provision in that we have other medical office under that commercial office. But this is different. This is recreational. It might be more prohibitive on licensing or where they can be. I don't know. But we've got commercial. Just leave it at that or have we got any other areas you want? Okay, hearing no other comments other than Steve's, we'll move on to number six. Marijuana safety compliance facility. License, uh, this is a safety compliance facility means a licensee that is a commercial entity that receives marijuana from marijuana facility or a registered primary caregiver. We are registered, right?
Same as number five.
It's commercial agricultural support and light industry.
All right, great, okay. Uh, number seven, marijuana event organizer. This is a little bit different than medical marijuana. Certainly would be a temporary special use permit. Now, we have commercial and commercial temporary use.
You could have office on that one.
Office on that one? Okay. Anything else? Okay, number eight, temporary marijuana event. A tempor- temporary marijuana event means an event where the onsite sale or consumption of marijuana products or both are authorized at the location indicated on the state licensing during the dates indicated on the state license, during the state license. I think number seven, I mean, what? That's a person. How, how is a person gonna be affected by our ordinance? This, that is a person. He's a person licensed to apply. Why is there any? Any? That means.
I imagine it could be possible for an individual to conduct a business.
Yeah, but that's.
Social gathering.
That's the next one, though. Temporary marijuana event.
Yeah, but to conduct a business in order to primarily organize events like this, if they wanted a location.
But we don't grant the license. That's granted by the state.
They wanted, if they wanted to work out an office building in the township in order to, to be a marijuana event organizer.
Really? You're, you're required to, how, a special use permit to have a business that organizes events?
I think it's taking the definition that we have defined earlier at earlier meetings and trying to do what's best with.
Yeah, I got a question about that one. I'd have somebody take a look at that one.
Okay, that was number seven? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious about that.
You're just, because it's, there's no marijuana on site?
It's just a person. It's a person doing.
No, it could be a whole business.
It's applying for a temporary. Right, right. Could be a homeowner. But it is not, but then, then the next one is where are you gonna have that event? That's what, that's.
Where's the use, huh?
That's, maybe, but this, this is just a person, right?
Yes.
Do we have to have somebody that? You have to have someone special to organize these events.
Right, this guy, number seven.
Right, so maybe he's gonna have an office where he's gonna organize all this stuff and you go there to pay him to organize and do all the paperwork for this.
Kinda like a wedding planner.
Yeah. I mean, you could probably still do this out of your house.
Yeah, I just wondered if that's, if that's a special use permit to be, to have that as a job? Well, apparently there's state licensing that's involved. Right, I can see that. You probably wanna look at that a little close. Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious about that. Yeah. If that's appropriate to an ordinance.
So you're thinking maybe we don't wanna list it at all?
That person, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, maybe Roger Zapp would know if that's something that should even be included in, you know, ordinance. Cause the person is licensed to apply for a temporary marijuana. Right, that's all. Are they licensed through the state or are we giving them license?
It would be licensed to the state.
Okay, so that would be good to look at what the state says. Why would we have any say on that? I'd be, I'd be curious, just to, you know, what, what, what would that person be asking for? Can I have an office?
Yeah, is it, is it more or less, um, retained? I mean, is it any different from a marijuana retailer? I don't know if we're treating it as a marijuana retailer.
Marijuana, it's a big difference.
Definition wise, for sure, I see what you're saying, so.
I'm, I'm just curious. Is that, is there a reason why that's even in there for us to consider?
I think at this point in time, it's just because this is one of the definitions.
That the state has.
That the state has.
Okay, so we've just kinda thrown them all in there and say, is this something that?
Yeah, it's, it's been moved from adopting these definitions into ordinance and then now trying to figure out what to do with them. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that's something that we even have a purview to, to deal with. Well, usually we, we try to find places within our township. Yeah. Where certain things are at least considered to be allowed. Right, but I'm, I'm, there is nothing.
You're suggesting it could just be a home business?
I'm suggesting it be a home business. I'm, cause essentially it'd be an office that a guy has a phone and a computer, but he has no marijuana sales in there, because that's not what his license is for. His license is to organize events.
Okay. But, yeah, but at this point in time, I do think it's just categorizing these under use.
Yeah.
I think it would fit under commercial temporary use or whatever you, you see fit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't concur with that at all. I think this is purely a job.
But later, but later down the end, you know, on the other side of this, we're gonna be deciding, uh, where these are gonna be permitted within each district. So I think that's a better question for that.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
But I understand if you're saying that it's not gonna be, uh.
Yeah, I, I see where we can say events. Yeah, we have control of where events are held and all that kinda stuff. But we can't control what kinda job someone has.
Whether or not it should be in Article fifty or not.
Wouldn't you just put that in Article fifteen and under the zoning districts allowed? You could just put that they're not a special use permit for that. It's a by right?
Okay, I, I can, I can, yeah, yeah. I can see something like that.
Because we're not, there's not actually.
Sure, sure, I can see that. Sure, you know. But in the meantime, can we put, is it okay to put that under commercial and temporary use? We also mentioned office, commercial office.
Well, this is, this is just where you find it, where you find that use category, right?
Exactly.
It's only the use category.
Okay.
I think this would be kind of a, I just looked it up on Google here and it, in, in Michigan, if you wanna be a marijuana event organizer, you have to submit a, a license application to the M R A, which is the marijuana regulatory agency and pay a six thousand dollar application fee. So this is gonna be more like a business than somebody probably doing it out of their house. And they're subject to background checks and.
But as a professional surveyor, I was licensed, I could work out my house. You know, you don't have to have an office for one person.
That's what I'm saying. You can actually work out your house.
Sure, 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 okay.
But it's gonna be kinda six thousand dollars to.
Yeah, I think you could just leave it under the commercial use category and just, it's a matter of what we do over in the zoning district.
Okay.
Just like builders that work out of their house, you know, and just go there and as long as you don't have any signs outside or no reason why they couldn't do that.
Right, okay. Okay, let's move on to eight. Temporary marijuana event. Temporary marijuana event means an event where on the outs, on the onsite sale or consumption of marijuana products or both are authorized at the location indicated on the state license during the dates indicated on the state license. Indicated on the state license during the dates indicated on the state license, okay? So this is pretty much the state again. There's probably something, there's probably a fee for that as well, cause there's a state license.
The state's making many thousands of dollars on this project. But this is just a matter of where do you find the temporary marijuana event in our use category, so.
So we just leave it at commercial?
I would think you just leave it in commercial.
Okay, no one else has it? Any other areas you wanna add that to since? Okay.
Maybe if you're gonna have something like this, you know, you might wanna, you know how Black Rocks has their thing on the woods, you know, somewhere?
Right.
You might wanna also put in.
Forest recreation.
What, do what?
Forest recreation. Well, that's a, that's a zoning district.
That's a zoning district. We're just talking about where, what, where it's gonna appear in the use categories.
Yeah. In the woods. In the woods? In the woods. Okay, so that's all set. Number nine, marijuana microbusiness. A marijuana microbusinesses are authorized to cultivate no more than a hundred and fifty plants, process and package marijuana, conduct retail sales or transfer marijuana to individuals twenty-one years of age or older and transfer marijuana to a marijuana safety compliance facility for testing. Wow, so it's just a, but they can do a number of things.
Do everything. But it's still a business, right?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Anything else? Okay, last one.
You just like reading these, don't you?
I do, yeah, it's improving my vocabulary. Designated consumption establishment. A designated consumption establishment means a commercial space that is licensed by the state and authorized to permit adults twenty-one years of age or older to consume marijuana products at the location indicated on the state license. Once again, get state licensing.
Well, you're, all of these things require a state license. Every one.
Okay. So it's commercial?
Sure.
Good enough. Anything else? Okay, gentlemen, with those notes, we'll ask.
And that's all I'm just thinking of. Where do you, if, if I wanna be a designated consumption establishment, where do I go look up the requirements for it? I'd go look it up under commercial in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So we're even advocating we just put it all on the commercial or just look what we came up with?
Yeah, I just, some of these is because you, you could conceivably, the marijuana safety compliance facility, you could conceivably look it up under agriculture, support or light industry. You could go there and you'd find the same definition and the same zoning areas regulated that you'd find under either one of those use categories.
All right, so we just asked staff to make those corrections or place those in the nomograph for next week.
Brian's been over here feverishly writing notes.
I got some scribbles.
And so when it comes back at our next meeting, we're, we're looking for the Article fifteen, you know, the graphs with these things entered in the appropriate spots and then we'll sit there and go through each one and decide what kind of zoning ordinance.
Zoning district.
Zoning districts we wanna put them in and whether we wanna require them by right or say they're by right or special use permit or. And I think the only thing you might wanna look at when you get down to that is the, the marijuana event organizer you might not require a special use permit for that.
Okay, let's move on then. Okay, outdoor, uh, let, excuse me, uh, twenty twenty-one, oh wait, let's start with eight A. Uh, US forty-one corridor advisory group meeting minutes. I noticed that the township's mentioned in there a number of times. Did you attend that one?
I was at that one.
Okay.
Yep, um, we presented the discount tire site plan, uh, to group. Uh, just kinda gave them the rundown as far as where it was gonna be and at what stage, uh, the review was at. Um, I think that was before it was, um, approved. Get that planning commission. I also gave an update on the S B I grants. Um, working with M dot and, you know, letting everybody know about, uh, the project and potential it has. And then Jason had described the north side of forty-one easement for the tunnel had been secured.
Okay, and then on the back page, we've got site plan. Jason went over the discount tire. There are some questions here. That Ben questioned the gravel tracking pad on US forty-one. Yeah, what's that?
The gravel tracking pad is in the driveway, in the driveway area when the construction vehicles or traffic entering or leaving the construction site has to drive over. It's like a limestone path.
Okay.
That doesn't allow you to collect mud just before you get to the roadway. And that's why in that motion, it was put that they have to clean the roadway off daily. So any mud they drop on there that doesn't get off their tires across the pad. I mean, you use that tracking pad for a month, it's probably got mud on it. It just says you gotta clean the road off on a daily basis, which is already a county rule anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Their concern was the sidewalk, I believe. Should not be placed on a new sidewalk.
What's that gravel tracking pad?
Yeah, he just states here, this gentleman by the name of Ben, questioning.
Yeah, the gravel tracking pad only goes in the, the dirt or in the driveway itself that there's no hard surface on it.
All right, that was eight A. Uh, eight B is the two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty-five draft of M dot's construction program. That's on this pulled out sheet. Before we get too far, how can these be December tenth meeting minutes when we discussed that gravel pad after that? It was a different gravel pad, right? It's not the same one? What? He's, he's referring. We talked about this discount tire. Was that the last planning commission meeting we were at?
Yeah, this is what he was.
Oh, that's what was discussed there and you referenced it. Okay, okay. It was, yeah, okay.
No, no, we, we took action on that after that meeting, right?
Okay, I got you.
I believe you did. I listened out the January.
It was a December meeting and we actually approved that at the January eighth meeting, didn't we?
Right, okay, okay. I thought that was a discussion, okay.
That's how I get into that whole thing when I put that motion together. Because I'm reading all those concerns and I said, well, let's just make a motion that accommodates all that stuff.
I got you.
Make everybody happy.
So as you can see with the, um, construction program from M dot, you see that we are picked out here. So twenty twenty. So it looks like we're in the twenty twenty-one R and R, US forty-one front street to right street overlay. So the letting is, the letting is gonna be January eighth of twenty-one. Is that going off the biz? Is that what they mean by letting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you overly just read over the concrete or do they tape the concrete up and replace it?
I, I'm not sure if they're gonna be milling it up.
They mill the surface so it's, takes the top surface off and it gives the asphalt overlay that they put on it an irregular surface to adhere to.
But like on the biteouts, that's concrete. So what do they do with that?
They just mill the top of it. Uh, they mill off the top inch or so. And then they put an overlay over top of that so it's not putting the asphalt right on top of the smooth concrete.
Okay.
They, they, they mill that all out and they mill it about that deep. And then they put a, a emulsion spray over top of that that makes the surface of that concrete a little more tacky and then they put the overlay over top of that.
So that shouldn't be that big of a disruption like it was last summer?
No, no. Uh, they were actually talking about doing some of these operations at night. Uh, they haven't made that final decision. But yeah, that, that milling machine's pretty loud.
I would, I would expect, uh, some driveway, some access consolidations, some changes with, uh, Michigan left turns in the median, um, a number of those planned.
Are they gonna have another meeting involving the township or? I'm just, because one of the things I'm gonna mention, um, is that we really need to get M dot involved with this, uh, grant process that we're going through. So they need to be a big component of this.
Which great project?
It's this, uh, sustainable built environment initiative, which they call, um, It's this, uh, Sustainable Built Environment Initiative, which they call, um, MACH, Marquette Area Climate and Health Adaptation.
I'm sure there's gonna be several more meetings about this before they get to twenty twenty-one.
Right, but I guess I'm just saying that it'd be nice as soon as we find out about them. And if we have any connections with MDOT, it'd be good to get them involved.
Just what happens, Jason does.
I thought he might.
What's his name? Matt somebody?
Yeah.
I know it's been, it's always been mentioned at every quarter meeting, um, kind of extensively, you know, it's kind of exciting thing, so.
Okay.
Um, when's the next meeting? The new, the next public?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah.
Oh, update.
I'll get to that. Let's just go through these other things in order. Any other comments or suggestions about the MDOT construction program?
I said a question about what loon islands are.
I've been guessing.
Right, it says Brickyard Road to Yerkois Street. Twenty twenty-three.
I'm guessing it has to do with lighting?
Hmm? Where are you guys up in?
Where is it, Jim?
It's on the right side, kinda like in blue up on the top.
Right next to North Arrow?
Yeah.
Other side in blue.
It's on the island. What do you know what that is?
I'm not sure what a loon island is.
I'm thinking that is some kind of a wetlands area.
Probably short for something or.
Where do you see this, Jim?
You don't have that on yours.
I don't?
No, you don't have any blue text on yours.
Hey, how come you got blue?
There it is. Oh, wrong side. All right.
Right by the North Arrow.
Call it up on your phone and ask what a loon island is.
Okay.
That's what he's doing.
Oh, okay.
Wow. Interesting.
Uh, I'm gonna guess it's some kind of a wetland.
I'm thinking it's a place for pedestrians that don't know what they're doing. They can go across there and stand in the middle.
What they call them, Newfoundlanders could go there.
No, not the Newfies.
All the way from there up to Yerkois.
Well, you've been to Newfoundland.
It's a million dollar project.
Okay, any more comments on that?
We're looking up loon island.
Found nothing.
Nothing?
I found nothing.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the outdoor lighting ordinance under eight C. We have violations, update on United Contractors at two twenty-five Northwoods Road. We also have East Easy Stop at nine seventy-five Ontario Avenue.
Two twenty-five Northwoods, that's across from the Barren Bean, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, um, just wanted to update you on the fact that, that ordinance has been being, uh, has been enforced lately. Uh, with those two specifically, um, specifically for new wall pack lighting that's been, um, actually updated but not conforming to that ordinance, so. Um, I think we might be looking at maybe better ways or some new ways to make that known to businesses, uh, before they update this lighting. Um, you know, that's, if we can address that, then all the better.
And inasmuch as it is a, it's an ordinance.
Exactly.
Okay, and the, and the commercial operators are obliged to know the ordinance for what they're doing. Um, it's not if they can get it in without being caught, they can leave it there.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of where they're spending money they shouldn't be spending. So they're kinda claiming a hardship, I gather?
This, this ordinance is out there.
And as I told by the last guy that stopped me for a speeding ticket, ignorance of the law is no excuse.
They probably still let him off.
No.
Okay, anything more on the lighting ordinance, ordinance, okay, reports? Township Board Report, Mr. Wigan.
You know, I had something someplace for that.
Did ya?
Yeah.
Something about, uh, new supervisor?
Yes, everybody knows that we ordered the new equipment.
Okay.
Uh, that was approved by the board. Should be in here before the second week in February. And that is a Case two twenty-one F loader that has a quick connect feature on the front. And it's, uh, we got three pieces of equipment with that. One's a seven-foot snow blower that's designed for ice. And one is a ten-foot scoop that is for clearing parking lots, pushing snow. And the other one is a standard bucket that you'd find on the front of any front end loader. And the theory being why we went that way instead of what was originally proposed was so that it's something we can use during the non-winter season to supplement, uh, the backhoe used by Public Works. And again, the nicest thing about this is it was, it's being purchased in the general fund and they're setting up, uh, rental fees. Rental fees already been set up, so if Public Works uses it, they rent it based on Hobbs meter and they pay into the general fund. Half of what they pay in goes to replacement of the equipment and half goes to maintenance of the equipment. And, uh, it doesn't matter which department, if the fire department is using it for something, they're paying based on the Hobbs. And they transfer, it's not actually paying it, they're transferring funds from, from the fire department back into the general fund, into that account. Um, the thought was in the talk with, uh, the new superintendent of Public Works was that this works out and proves to be, uh, successful, then we'll trip, move it on and start including more of the township equipment in their contracts. And the other equipment that we've got around, put them in the same, uh, fund so that we can collect money on them, we can actually collect for, uh, replacement and maintenance. So it's just a better, a more transparent way of keeping our equipment updated, so we don't have to go out and we're gonna play, replace the backhoe someday. We don't have to say, gee, we need eight thousand dollars. Uh, it would already be there.
Nice.
Uh, so we've got that. The other, the big thing we're working on is, uh, the hiring of the new manager. We've done, the interviews are done. We're down to our last candidate. Uh, it's Dennis Lemina. Uh, you guys remember he was the supervisor here for six years? And, uh, we are, we sent him a contract. Uh, he sent us a.
Counter?
Counter offer of the contract. The board looked at that on Monday at a special meeting and came up with a counter to the counter and submitted that to him today at noon and went to him. We're just waiting to hear back from him. Uh, we're quite a ways apart on what he wants and what we're willing to give, so. I don't hold a lot of hope for where that's gonna head, but, but we'll see after he sends back his response. If, uh, we fail to come up with a candidate out of this round of interviews, we start all over again, advertise it again, do it all over.
And how long has this process been from?
This process has been in place since the end of September.
Okay, so. But it wouldn't take that long for the second process, cause you've already.
It's all brand new, right?
It's all brand new. You still gotta advertise it.
So he might have to like stay a little longer?
Well, I think, well, he's already here until the end of May if we want him.
Okay.
Uh, I think the way this is going to go the second time, there's gonna be a push to, uh, or at least the discussion is, is that the second time around, we won't do it ourselves. We'll give it to the Michigan Municipal League or something and let them advertise it and send their last three candidates to us for interviewing.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea.
But that's what the board's been busying their time with.
Okay. How about that road committee? What have they been doing?
The road committee is doing nothing but looking at, uh, the RFP that went out that closed today at two o'clock, right?
Came back today.
Came back today.
It did.
Who we got?
One bid. Which we should talk about.
Farner?
Farner.
Okay.
Yep.
The road committee will look at that at their February fourth meeting and make a recommendation to the board, uh, the February fourth meeting of the board.
Okay.
Assume it's pricey.
It is pricey.
There you go.
Recreation Committee. We just met last night. Uh, we have a new chair of the Rec Committee, uh, Todd Carruth will be the new chair. I'm the vice chair and Dave Wigan is the secretary. Um, and Mr. Dietrichson provided us with some, uh, with some potential, uh, drafts of, uh, maybe wanna take a look at those three there. I know, Dave, you already saw, we've got another three here. You already saw these, but.
You don't wanna look at them again?
I don't wanna look at them again.
So I don't know if you wanna talk to him about this, Ryan? I think it's just a good idea. Just see if they got any input.
I, uh, brought these three drafts to the Rec Committee last night. Uh, my hope was to take these three and kind of, uh, have input, suggestions to create a hybrid, um, just to finalize something to put out there in Shremwood. So, um, the Rec Committee came back with a lot of good ideas and suggestions, and I think there's gonna be, um, a couple of different types of maps out there that are gonna make everybody happy. And we'll fill those kiosks up.
So if you see anything on those that you want, uh, want to be considered, uh, direct them to.
Yes, the, the main suggestion on there was to put, uh, the business locations on there by number and then identify which, uh, location was associated with the number so that the individuals coming in on the trail, whether it's on the tunnel end of the trail or in the Shremwood end of the trail, and locate a business to go eat or whatever it is they wanna do.
So there's actually four kiosks that have to be fulfilled. You can come, and so we're guessing we're talking about two of the same sign on either end, as we can just point it out. There's gonna be one at the Wetland Overlook, and so then we're gonna probably rely on, um, Watership Partnership to maybe help with identifying that. And then there'll be another one that will be in the middle where the trail, the loop trail breaks off, and that will be more of a map that's dedicated just for those trails so people can identify what's going on.
I think there's an idea to make the extent, uh, show the northern portion of trails and businesses as well, so.
Yeah, I wanted to span the picture so that the picture actually takes you up on the north side of forty-one, so we can point those businesses out on that side.
The actual maps could be about twice as large as this.
Except for the one in the middle. I understand that on the ones on the two ends, but in the middle, it probably should be more detailed, just about the park.
Yeah, just the park, yeah.
All right.
For sure.
Okay, um, whoops, this is. Okay, I just, uh, received notification today from Brad Newman. He and Wayne Bear, Bea are the two main players for, uh, Michigan State University with this grant we have. It's a planning grant to work on our twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-one, uh, MDOT rehabilitation. And so they, they have asked us to have, hold it on April the ninth, or we've come to the conclusion that April ninth, it's a Thursday from six thirty to eight. That's what we're gonna advertise. This will be the second, uh, community visioning. Hopefully that, and Jim, I know you were at the last one, um, hopefully we can get more planning commissioners there, cause it's gonna affect planning for the US forty-one.
And they're gonna have some kind of an idea put together where we're at now and.
Yes.
Some recommendations and all that?
What's happened so far, this Brad Newman took like a hundred photographs of the whole corridor, you know? And so, um, based on those, and then what we did is the, there's a CATF committee, there's a, a committee that myself and, uh, Jason's on and Lynn Durant and Rob Svet and Frank Stabile and Elise DeChardis is on. She's from Marquette Conservation. And so the, our group went through and picked out the photos out of the hundred that we thought would be best to be used in, in this, uh, visioning exercise. So they have those. Hopefully that's what they're working with. We haven't seen any results yet. But basically what they'll do is they'll take a regular photograph and they'll show what it could look like using health and climate adaptation types of projects. So we're looking at certainly, uh, water runoff and drainage from the road. Trying not to send that down to Lake Superior and trying to, you know, mitigate some of that. That's one of the goals. And it's really gonna be based on the DDA is really behind this because they're the ones that really wanna improve the corridor, uh, not that we don't, but just that they have four goals that they want to accomplish, and this would help with their goals.
Are there grants that will be, once a plan is put together, are there other grants out there to actually pay for the project that may be available?
As I understand, there's gonna be a small stipend to help us with that. But what it does, just, it's just like the, the roof concept for the ice rink. It gives you a conceptual visualization that makes it easier for you to go after grants and also sell the business association on. Because eventually I think that the DDA would like, right now we're levying, levying one mil, but the DV, DDA can level up to two mils.
Well, that one mil is just for one year though, right? It's done, it's over now.
Right. So the, what we'd like to do is put as much improvement into the corridor as we can, which means that if we can sell the business association on this, um, then we may have a chance to raise it to two mil to help with a ongoing, working towards this goal, this visioning goal that.
Do you remember what they said one mil brought in from the DDA?
I think Randy said something about, I don't know if it's two mils, a hundred and twenty thousand?
A year, something like that.
It's two mils, a hundred and twenty.
Was it two?
I think so. You know, I don't know if it was in minutes, but I'll look that up.
But the theory is if we, if we get it that far, just use those mils, the money bearing from that to use it for the matching funds, not to save it up so we can pay for the whole project, cause the project came way out of our pocketbook.
Absolutely, yeah. So you just look at the eight million dollars that, I mean, that's why MDOT is so important, that they may be able to place some of these climate and health projects as part of their project. If it helps with water runoff or pedestrian lighting, that's one for, uh, driveway access or, um, management. So it's pedestrian lighting, driveway management. What's the other one? That's the fourth one. Okay.
Facades?
I'm sorry?
Facades?
Aesthetics, yes, yeah, thank you.
I think the big thing is, is MDOT will include them in their plans, but they won't pay for any of it. That's, therein lies the problem. They, they're not cough up money for it. That's on our dollar. And that's why we gotta figure out where we're gonna get the funds from.
Correct, but then at least this way, when we go for funding, all of these funds nowadays, they want some kind of site plan, some kind of, uh, or all these grants want some kind of a, a visual of what you plan to implement. So. Okay, any questions on that? Announcements? Any other announcements? We have no public, so no public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners?
Have they decided on a, another member for the planning commission yet?
I just sent a text to Lynn. Um, let's see if she sent anything back, but, um, not yet.
They were gonna actually advertise.
Here's what she said. Here's what she says. She says, not so far. I asked her about it, nevermind. I left some messages and have not heard back from anybody that we were looking at. I asked her to put together, um, put together, uh, an ad for the Mining Journal and we're gonna run a Help Wanted Line ad on Friday and then a display ad on Saturday. I can forward the ad to you when I get home, if you'd like. So if you wanna get that, I'll just forward it to the other commissioners. Okay. Any other planning commissioners? Comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we have one more motion. It's time for Mr. Johnson to make a motion.
Thought we didn't need a motion.
You're right, we don't. Let's do it for fuck. Johnson? Taken. Thank you. Thank you, it's adjourned it. Eight twenty-nine.
There, wait.
Oh, thank you, Dave. I've never used that yet.
I wanted to get that on the tape. 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 I wanted to get that on the tape.